I'd like to bring the meeting of the New Kent Planning Commission to order here on, I got it, on February 18th, 2020. If you would, rise and give us a moment of silence and then pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for coming out tonight. Tonight we do a little reorganization and, but right now, if you could give us a roll call.
Mm-hmm.
Chair?
Full house. Ms. Townsend?
Here.
Ms. Rose?
Here.
Ms. Butler?
Here.
Ms. Pearson?
Here.
Ms. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. LaRochelle?
Here.
Dr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Bennett?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Tiller?
Here.
Mr. Moyer?
Here.
Did I miss anybody?
Think so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tonight we have two new commissioners joining us, Joe Davis and Gary LaRochelle, and what I'd like everybody to do is just, you know, mention your name and where, what district, what community you represent. If we can start with Tommy? Very good.
I'm Patty Townsend, I'm District 1.
I'm Laura Rose, I'm also District 1.
Amy Pearson, District 3.
John Moyer, District 2.
I'm Kelly Ladue, Planning Director, been here for about 14 years.
I'm Brendan Hefty, I'm the County Attorney and Legal Counsel.
Kenny's telling us to turn our mics on.
Sherri Adams, I'm the Admin Assistant for Planning and Examining.
Mark Bennett, District 5, with Collins.
I don't know if they're working, Kenny. I do? Oh.
I'm Katie Butler, I am District 2.
Cortisa Thomas, I'm District 3.
Joanne Schmidt, District 4.
Welcome, Gary and Joe. Appreciate you coming. Appreciate your appointment.
At this time, we'll have our annual elections, and I will start this off, and looking for a nominee for Planning Commissioner Chairman. Do I have any nominees? Yes?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move to nominate Amy Pearson as the 2020 Chair of the New Kent County Planning Commission.
Sorry, I did not turn my mic on. I'll repeat.
Do it again, please. Thank you.
I move to nominate Amy Pearson as the 2020 Chair of the New Kent County Planning Commission.
Thank you. Are there any more nominees? If not, can I have a motion to close the nomination?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to close the nomination for the 2020 Chairman for the New Kent County Planning Commission.
Then I guess we can call a roll. I move to elect Amy Pearson as the 2020 Chair of the New Kent County Planning Commission by acclamation.
Yes.
Very good. Do we need a second or?
No.
Okay. And I believe, Amy, congratulations. You're the rest of the meeting. Oh, okay. I thought acclamation would be acclamation. I think it's okay.
All right, a motion by Ms. Townsend or Mr. Moyer to elect Ms. Pearson. How say you, Ms. Rose?
Aye.
Ms. Thomas?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Mr. LaRochelle?
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Abstain.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And congratulations, Amy, and I just want to say thank you for my tenure up here, and I appreciate the cooperation and the activeness of the board and the commission during the time I was doing this. And so, we'll act like we just switched seats, okay?
Okay. Thank you for two years, for your two years of service here too, Mr. Moyer. All right, next we have on the agenda, we have to elect a Vice Chair of the Planning Commission, and I have a motion for a candidate for Vice Chair of the Planning Commission.
Again, if the commission doesn't. And if the commission doesn't mind, I'll make a motion. I'll move to nominate Laura Rose as the 2020 Vice Chair of the New Kent County Planning Commission.
If I can, I'll move to close nominations for the 2020 Vice Chair of the New Kent County Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moyer. Can I get a motion?
I'll move to elect Laura Rose as the 2020 Vice Chair of the New Kent County Planning Commission by acclamation.
Okay. Think we got this down pat. All right. Can we call a roll? Yes, a motion by Ms. Townsend to nominate Ms. Rose as Vice Chair. How say you, Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Absolutely, aye.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Rose?
Abstain.
Ms. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. LaRochelle?
Aye.
Ms. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, next we need a motion for an election of the Public Hearing Chair.
I'm, oh, I'm sorry. I move to nominate Katie Butler as the 2020 Public Hearing Chair of the New Kent County Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rose.
I'll move to close nominations for the 2020 Public Hearing Chair of the New Kent County Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Moyer. Can I get a motion for election?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to elect Captain Butler as the 2020 Public Hearing Chairman.
For the New Kent County Planning Commission by acclamation.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend. Can you call a roll? Yes, Ms. Townsend, motion to elect Ms. Butler as the Planning Commission Public Hearing Chair. How say you, Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Ms. Butler?
Abstain.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Mr. LaRochelle?
Aye.
Ms. Rose?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Thomas?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, next we have the Public Hearing Vice Chair. Any discussion or nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I'd be more than happy to make a motion here. I move to nominate Mark Bennett as the 2020 Public Hearing Chairman of the New Kent County Planning Commission. Our Vice Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend. Can I get a motion to close the nomination?
I move to close the nominations for the Public Hearing Vice Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Rose.
I move to elect Mark Bennett as the 2020 Public Hearing Vice Chair of the New Kent County Planning Commission by acclamation.
Thank you. Katie, Sherri, can you call a roll? Yes, how say you, Mr. LaRochelle?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Ms. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Ms. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Rose?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
I abstain.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Bennett. Next we have an election of the Richmond Regional Planning District Commission Representative. Can I get a nomination?
Since he's done such a bang-up job.
Oh, yeah.
Till now, I move to nominate Mr. Moyer as the 2020 RR-PDC Representative of the New Kent County Planning Commission.
Thank you, Ms. Rose. Can I get somebody to close the nomination?
I move to close.
I move to close nominations for the 2020 RR-PDC Representative of the New Kent County Planning Commission. Thank you, Ms. Butler. Can I? Go ahead, Patty.
Mr. Chairman, I move to elect John Moyer as the 2020 RR-PDC Representative of the New Kent County Planning Commission by acclamation.
Thank you, Patty. That's okay. Thank you. Sherri, can you call a roll? How say you, Ms. Butler?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Ms. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. LaRochelle?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Rose?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Abstain.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you very much. It's Thursday, I'd never get back. It's okay.
All right. We'll move on to the adoption of the bylaws. Has everyone had a chance to review the bylaws as they were presented in the packet? Anybody have any changes or suggestions regarding the bylaws? I think last year, was it last year we changed everything to 6:30? Was it the year, has it been two years? Okay. They haven't changed much through the years, though, I don't think.
Mr. Chairman, I have, I have one issue here that may need to be addressed. It's during the public hearing time, whereas an individual gets three minutes, but if someone is actually representing a group, that then get additional minutes, and I think we need clarification whether it was seven or five.
Oh, what does it say?
Mr. Chairman, in the past, I've allotted seven for those people in all groups.
It is, yeah, it is seven.
To you.
And I don't know where it is in the bylaws.
It's number four, on page five. Yeah, section K. Are you thinking that's too much, Ms. Townsend, or?
No, I just.
Wanted to.
Just wanted to make clarification with our members because, you know, sometimes you hear five, seven, two different, two minutes do make the difference.
Right. And is there criteria on the, on the definition of a group? We have, we have looked into that, haven't we, Mark? Mark, I don't remember what.
I'll have to re.
Yeah.
I'll have to recall, but we did look into it, and it had to be some, what, of a bona fide group, and it couldn't just be.
Right.
Representing a family, per se. It had to be.
An entity.
Yeah, entity of some sort, recognized entity. But I can present that to you so we can understand it all in the next meeting.
Okay. All right. Can we, even though he's going to do that, we can still vote on these tonight? We don't have to. Okay. Can I get a, any other discussion on the bylaws? If not, can I get a motion to approve them? Anybody?
I'll make a motion when we approve the bylaws as written, with a little bit of an update from Mr. Bennett on the meaning of what a group is.
Okay, Sherri, can you call a roll for that? Yes, how say you, Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Thomas?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. LaRochelle?
Aye.
Ms. Rose?
Aye.
Ms. Butler?
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, the 2020 meeting schedule is also in the packet. Think it's the third Monday, all of them are the third Monday. Changes a little just for holidays, but that's just the first two, and so it's the third Monday. Anybody have any issues with that? Can I get a motion to approve the schedule?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept the meeting schedule as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend. Sherri, can you call the vote for that? Yes, how say you on the schedule? Ms. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Ms. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Mr. LaRochelle?
Aye.
Ms. Rose?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Sherri. Okay, next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from a long, long time ago on December 16th. Happy New Year, everyone. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes? Any changes or discussion about the minutes? If not, can I get a motion to approve the minutes? Couple of typos. Your microphone.
Let's see, um, one, two, three, four, five. On page, page three, six paragraph down that starts with Mr. Moyer until he saw, I did, I did actually have one question in that same paragraph where, and I'm sure you were quoting it verbatim, but since I wasn't here, I, you know, I didn't have much context, but said the, the work that was done by the Planning Commission and the AFD Review Subcommittee was over the top. What? Okay, okay. That's kind of.
Yeah, I mean, it was really good.
That's, that's kind of what I thought you meant, but.
Ignore it.
Yeah, okay. And then, one other, just a small typo, on page four, the next to the last paragraph, it says herring and chad populations. I'm assuming that should be shad.
Chad.
Yeah. Yes, shadfish.
I, I just, I don't, I don't know why I just called, I just saw that one.
Thank you, Ms. Rose.
Yeah, that's it.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for the meeting that occurred on December 16th, 2019, as amended.
Thank you, Mr. Moyer. Sherri, can you take the vote on that? Yes, to approve the December 16th, 2019 minutes with the corrections as amended by Ms. Rose. How say you, Mr. Rochelle, LaRochelle?
Abstain.
Abstain, that's correct. Mr. Davis?
Abstain as well.
Thank you. Good job. Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Rose?
Abstain, I was absent.
Ms. Butler?
Aye.
Ms. Thomas?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Next is the citizens' comment period. Do you have any?
Nope, and there being none, we'll move on. We don't have any presentations, do we, Kelly?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Any unfinished business? I did want to ask a question if anybody had attended the meeting in Charles City about, we talked about that the last time.
The natural gas pipeline?
Yeah, the nat, yeah.
That's condition, okay. I did not.
You didn't? No. I just, we talked about it the last time, so I didn't know if anybody had enough data on that. No, okay. Any other unfinished business? No? Okay. No public hearings tonight. New business. We have a couple resolutions. Just want me to read them? They're both the same.
They do specify their levels.
And when they were appointed.
Right, right.
Okay. I'll read one of these. The only change is when they were appointed to the commission and when they resigned from the commission. But this is from Mr. Richard Contney, and one is also from Mr. Edward Pollard. Mr. Contney was first appointed to the Planning Commission on February 19th, 2013, and he recently resigned on December 31st, 2019. And Mr. Edward Pollard was first appointed 10 years earlier on January 13th, 2003, and he recently resigned on February 6th, 2020. And it says, "They both served as an officer of the Planning Commission numerous times throughout their years on the commission, and they provided steady guidance and advice with respect to activities and development within the county and maintaining the rural way of life. And they have been consistent and persistent in their dedication to serving the best interests of the county as a whole, and at all times professionally and conscientiously carried out their duties as a member and officer of the Planning Commission. They serve their community and New Kent County with pride, dignity, grace, and wisdom, and will be greatly missed. The New Kent County Planning Commission desires to recognize Mr. Pollard and Mr. Contney for their service to the county. Now therefore be it resolved this 18th day of February 2020 by the New Kent County Planning Commission that Edward Pollard and Richard Contney be and he, and they are hereby thanked and commended for their exemplary service to the citizens of New Kent County as a member of the Planning Commission. Be it further resolved that the commission and the planning department staff members extend our best wishes to Mr. Pollard and Mr. Contney and their family in all of their future endeavors." Too bad they weren't here tonight, but. We'll, um. Do we have to vote on that? Yeah.
Yeah, we do.
You can take both at the same time.
We can, okay. Can I get a motion to approve the resolutions? Thank you, Ms. Townsend. Ms. Adams, if you'll take the role on that? To approve both resolutions for Mr. Pollard, Mr. Contney, how say you, Ms. Rose?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Ms. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. LaRochelle?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Ms. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, on that note, I would just like to express that with Mr. Contey and Mr. Pollard, that a sincere thanks for their dedication, especially Mr. Pollard, has been on numerous years, and Mr. Contey had stepped up to the plate and took on some challenges. I would like to say that they will be sorely missed.
Definitely, Ms. Townsend.
Thank you.
And we'll get these framed and present to them at a future meeting where they can make it. I think Mr. Contney can make it to March.
Oh, good.
And we'll, we'll get in touch with Mr. Pollard. Might have to take it to him, but we'll see.
Okay, great. Thank you, Kelly. Okay, the chairman doesn't have a report because she didn't know she was going to be here for sure. So humble. I did it, really. I mean, I do, I, I did want to mention, and maybe this, this is better at the end, about the solar farm meeting is tomorrow at the visitor's center at 5:30. I encourage everybody to come out and ask any questions that they might have. It has not formally been presented to the Planning Commission yet, or the county for that matter, I don't believe. So if you want to come out tomorrow night at 5:30, that'd probably be a good idea if you have time. We'll move on to Mr. Moyer's report on the Richmond Regional Planning District Commission.
Okay, I, I attended the, as it's known now, is the Plan RVA meeting last week, and it was split up into two parts of the meeting was, one, as a member of that commission, we actually are in charge of the employees of that commission, of that board. Thus, there was discussion on salaries, COLAs, and that type of stuff. We have, in the past, not giving the director a COLA, even though we've given all the employees the cost of living increase. And so, we had to make a motion that she is an employee, thus she should be getting the COLA too. The second part of the meeting was, was discussion on housing and the need for affordable housing throughout the, every area in the Richmond Planning area but New Kent, because that, this board that gave the report does not include New Kent. But it was of interest to the supply and demand, and as I mentioned to a few people here, it was also of interest to watch the chairman of the city council for Richmond, speaking with the person, has a lot to do with the development of Navy Hill, and as they discussed, this group discussed about affordable housing, which the Navy Hill project was a big part of, was affordable housing, watching them grimace because they had just been turned down. So, it was to show how votes go and how important they are and why we are in a position like this. That vote to basically condemn that Navy Hill project was 5-4. And so, some people would say that was four votes, five votes one way, that it mattered. No, it was one. One person took away billions of dollars. One person took away billions of dollars to downtown Richmond, in my opinion. So think about that when we have a vote that's close, you know, that, it, it does matter about your vote. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Moyer. Good point. Any other commissioners' reports?
No, no real report, other than, again, I wanted to let Kelly know and her department that I had some concerns still with the traffic, that dispatch in Quaker Road. Hopefully, Board of Supervisors will at some point get a highway study and-
Dispatch in Quaker or dispatch in?
Dispatch in 249.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend.
Say, I've been on the board for eight, and I probably have complained about that for eight years in a row, so don't know that that's going to happen yet. But we're trying still. They are in marketplace drive as well, and round.
Thank you, Mr. Tiller. Any other reports from any other commissioners? No? Okay. Staff report.
Okay, thank you. I just have two quick things. First is the annual report that was in your packets, they're kind of the recap for 2019. It includes, as in previous years, a recap from each meeting and whether any action was taken on public hearings, a summary of how many COs were issued, I do those monthly population numbers, and the attendance report as requested by the board, and then on the back, we kind of give you all an update about my department and our numbers of applications that we've been getting over the last couple of years. And it is random, but it's getting, getting pretty busy, so we've got a lot going on right now.
Can I ask you a question about, um, I, I remember we discussed the limiting of one of cluster developments, and then also in an area like the Arbers, there was a limit on the amount of houses that could be built in a year. Um, you know, those, um, I, I finally took a ride down Pine Fork Road and looked to my right as I was coming towards 106.
Right.
And I'm there, oh my goodness.
I know.
Okay, I don't know, are we reaching the numbers that were, that were discussed at that time?
Well, you bring up two kind of separate issues. The cluster subdivision provision was addressed a couple of years ago when we raised the acreage limit from 30 till 75. The Arbers is part of Land Bay Four of the PUD.
Right.
Um, they're currently working on Section Two, building in Section Two, that's what you're seeing from Pine Fork Road, so they have not hit their-
Okay.
-limit yet. There's going to be another section, and we're hearing rumors of Land Bay Five coming in with their next section. That's the Four Seasons community.
That's Four Seasons, yes.
And we haven't gotten anything yet concrete on that, right? And then, um, Land Bay One, the Venetara section, we're currently reviewing a plan for the cottages area for 118 lots, so they're going crazy in the farms of New Kent. But those were all, you know, previously approved as part of the PUD.
And, and the point on the previous approved, how many cluster developments of less than the required amount are out there that haven't been-
Built out.
-built yet?
I get this question a lot.
Because, because I know, and I should give a report on this strategic planning, because one of the things that's discussed about that is we see all these new cluster developments popping up, and those could be 10, 15, 20 years old-
Yeah.
-that because of 2008 were never built.
Right.
But now, they are being built. Are there a lot?
The ones that are there are large, so it seems like there are a lot. Um, I just did a summary for the Strategic Planning Consultants about this, just dealing with the planned unit developments. I don't know the exact figures, but I can bring that, um, for you next month. The Farms of New Kent is one of them, they're probably only about a third of the way built out in, as a whole. The Kentland planned unit development where Brickshire is and Oakmont Villas, that's another thing we were hearing about, a new section of Oakmont Villas that's going to be coming in. They're little less than half, because the whole section, you know, beyond what's there now has not come in for planning or infrastructure or anything yet, but that was all approved as part of the Kentland part.
Right.
Um, as you know, Patriots Landing is pretty well-built out. Mm-hmm, yep. And then they brought me back to Dragons Ridge, which I kind of forgot about, because that was approved 2004. That was that drag racing track and some hotels and camping.
Pulled in?
Kent flats and, yeah, over there.
Packs.
That's still out there, so it was approved, but nothing's happened out there.
Okay.
So, the Drag, Dragons Ridge, was that for a track or for other development other than the track?
Both.
Both?
Yeah, it was a track and there were some camping units and a, like a hotel. Yeah, it kind of, I had to go back and remember what was approved out there.
It's just the dragster.
Mm-hmm.
That was a road course. It was a road course where you're racing against the clock. It was a road course, I believe.
My memory is it's a road course and it was a Dragger's Village, uh, like little cottage or something like that.
Right.
To go with that.
Yeah. And while my mic is still on, I got a question for you, Kelly, just thought, when you were talking about how much Venetara was building out, how close are they to their numbers to where they actually have to start building some of the commercial space? Do you know?
We keep track of, they're getting close in Land Bay Four to some of their amenities, but as far as the commercial space, I'd have to look.
Because I know that was part, that was a proffer.
Yeah.
Once they reached the threshold, they have to build so many thousands of square feet of commercial space?
Unfortunately, I don't think that they're that close yet, but I can check on that. The amenities, yes, but the commercial space, I have to look.
Madam Chairman have a question for, still, um, these new subdivisions, are we restricting any kind of water usage, or do these subdivisions have to apply for water usage?
What do you mean by new?
Well, any new subdivision, are they just attaching to an existing subdivision that has a, a system set in?
It depends on how many lots the subdivision is approved for, what zoning classification it is in, and how close they are to the public utilities.
Well, our, our amount of gallons that I guess we withdraw, are we sort of close to, to that max?
I don't- Tommy probably knows more than I do, but I don't think so either.
I think, hate this, as much as we favor the system, only four mics can be on. I know Larry Dane, the director of utilities, keeps saying, you know, because we keep getting requests for gallons of water from different, um, commercial spaces, and he keeps saying, we're, we're good, because some of it we're going to be selling, and we keep getting all these new houses and, and the subdivision, especially in, um, like Venetara, the Four Seasons and the Arbers, they're all on county water. So he keeps saying we're good, so I guess we are.
I think back when these planned unit developments were being proposed and approved, some of them were required to, you know, get their own groundwater withdrawal permits and work with the county on that, so the capacity is there, that's what Larry keeps telling us, so. So anyway, if, if y'all are comfortable with the annual report, I would take a motion to forward it to the Board of Supervisors. If not, if there's anything else you want to see added or changed, or I can bring it back to you next month, but that's up to you.
I'd like to give accolades for perfect attendance for some people. John Moyer?
Yeah.
Ms. Schmidt? Mr. Contney? Mr. Bennett? That's awesome.
Thank you.
Kelly, one, one question.
Sure.
Um, you have the nu- number received, but i- is that, is that truly indicative of the number that have been processed or like the site, you received 24 site, site plans?
Some of which, yeah, might currently still be under review.
Okay.
Yeah.
That, it, it would probably be nice to have that distinction made.
Okay.
But, you know, oth- other than that, I mean, it, it looks fine.
So you're saying, just, too, just note which ones are still under review?
Yeah, under the numbers. Same thing with some of the subdivisions, like if something came in and, you know, December 15th, and it has, you know, two-month review process, we might still be reviewing it.
Yeah.
I could break it down between under review and approved.
I, I think it would probably be more accurate portrayal of what, what we, and what you did and what we may have to go on during, during Kent here.
Okay.
Kelly, was there a reason 2017 was not included or skipped? Here's this 2016, 2018, 2019.
I figured someone was going to ask about that. I spaced out and did not do an annual report for 2017. I was looking back in my records and I've done everyone since 2006, and I missed one, so that's the truth.
That's the truth. You were ready for it.
I was, I said, I know somebody's going to see that.
Good catch, Mr. Bennett.
Yeah, thanks, Mark.
Yeah, I am too, but I didn't catch it.
Okay.
So do you want that break out for the next month, or just to add it in before I give it to the board?
Yeah, just that, I, I don't know, how's everybody? I mean-
Should we wait till you do that to approve it?
I can, sure.
If you want to do that. Or approve it with that assumption?
I, I think we could approve it with that assumption.
Okay, okay.
All right.
Do you want to make a motion? Put your mic on first.
Yeah. Okay, well.
I moved to approve the 2019 annual report and forwarded on to the Board of Supervisors with the addendum of noting the numbers processed in addition to the number received for permit applications.
Thank you, Ms. Rose. Ms. Adams, can you take the vote on the annual report?
Yes, certainly. How say you, Ms. Rose?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Ms. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Ms. La Rochelle?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Okay.
The only other staff report I wanted to bring up was, we have the preliminary schedule for the Planning Commissioners Training, and if you look on page two, they already have, what is it, one, two, three, four sessions in Richmond? Oh, no, that's creative zoning approach, it's probably just the one in fall.
Yeah. Certified.
Yeah. So, if anyone's interested, let me know. We have enough money, I think, to maybe send two commissioners. And I haven't gone since 2006, so could somebody who's more recently gone kind of give an overview? Would you mind? Yeah, I went this fall, and it was great. I mean, you learn a lot, you, um, the, I think the best part of it is the networking that you get there, because there's a lot of other planning commissioners from all over the state of Virginia, um, you know, big localities, small localities, and, um, it, it's a, it's a really great program. You get some good, um, material too, to take with you. So I, I would encourage the new members to go if, if you're available to go. It is paid for by the county.
Which course do you have? 101st.
Certified Planning Commissioners Program. Well, I guess the-
Peter.
Yeah, the other one would be okay too. The 100th is, is also in Richmond. It's a little bit sooner. It's June and September.
Well, I may be able to go on the 100th session, or the, start in June, I believe, my schedule, I believe, is going to be for evening.
Okay, great.
Let me know, and we'll get you registered if you want to do it, find out more info.
There is homework involved.
Yes, I forgot about that. There is homework involved. You have to go to a planning commission meeting.
Yeah, you got to go to planning.
Yeah, and honestly-
I went to James City.
Well, I, I actually listened to, I did it virtual, I didn't go. I, but I did, I mean-
But you did.
Yeah, I mean, I sat through the whole, the whole meeting, so, um, but that's, it's interesting to do that.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Essentially, they meet, you have the fir- the first meeting, they go, they go through the, some of the course material, and then there's like 10, 10, 10 or 11 weeks between that, that meeting and then the fin-
Final session.
Closeout, the final session, and each week you have, you have an assignment that you have to complete and email to the, um, to the instructor.
Right. But those, some of them are essay questions, small essay questions, based on the material that you've gone over and, and the, uh, the books and stuff. It's not-
It's, it's, it's not tou-
It's not terrible. It's not terrible.
But it, it, it does, you know, you, you do have to kind of either, either keep pace or you can, you can go through it quicker, but it, it, there's a lot of reading material that the, um, the assignments are based upon too.
Yep. And there's a lot of group activities there, and they bring in a lot of guest speakers too. So it, it is a really good program. So Ms., uh, Ms. Thomas and Mr. Davis, right?
That's great.
Good. That's all I have for, did you guys have anything, staff reports? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Kelly.
The next meeting is scheduled for Monday, March the 16th. We will, or does it look like we're going to have something on the agenda? Maybe? Maybe. I, depending on how this meeting goes tomorrow night, um, the solar- The solar farm. -project may be wanting to move forward, and with presentation, I recommend that they, they start there.
Yeah.
Um, I met with a woman today who might be interested in a small rezoning of her properties, but I don't have any applications or anything in yet, so we'll see, I guess. I'll get with you.
Okay.
And set the agenda if we want to have a meeting.
Great. Thanks, Kelly. All right. Um, anybody have anything else?
Move to adjourn.
Thanks, Mr. Moyer. Oh, yeah. All of them are going to be like that. No, I'm just kidding.
I want to get charged for the hour.